My name is Jill Sizer. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. And I'm going to moderate for this section, which is for Stevens Point School Board. For the April 2 election, there are seven candidates running for four open seats. And we're so grateful that we have all seven candidates with us this evening. Voters can vote for up to four candidates. And the candidate coming in fourth will finish out the one-year term currently vacant. The candidates in alphabetical order are Jeff Evil, Samuel Levine, Linda Lewis, Jeff Presley, Terry Rothman, Kim Shirick, Lisa Totten. These candidates are seated before you in alphabetical order. In order to provide the most time to hear from the candidates and to provide a fair and equal opportunity to answer questions important to this community, we have established and reviewed the format. It's the same as we went over earlier, the times and terms for this forum with the candidates. So I will jump right in now to the opening statements. So we'll begin with a one-minute opening statement from each candidate. And we will begin with Jeff Evil and continue down the table. Jeff.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having this forum. And thank you for all of you active citizens that are actively involved in your government. I'm qualified for the school board for a number of reasons. First of all, because I think I have a unique perspective. I was a business owner. I worked in industry for 35 years. I had my own business with 45 employees. I am also an adjunct instructor for Fox Valley Technical College, so I understand both the boardroom and the classroom challenges. I have experience on boards. I'm currently serving on three boards in the community. I've had other experiences in the past serving on boards. I have an agenda. It's not a hidden agenda. My agenda is very simply to help the school district achieve its goal of preparing every student for success with a world-class education. And I also am committed to my own personal development as a leader. I've been 15 years in Toastmaster Leadership. I'm also a fellow with Leadership Wisconsin.
Thank you. Next, Samuel Levine.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for everybody for coming out. I'm not going to give a long speech about why I'm qualified to be on the school board, but I'm going to tell you one thing. I am not running for the Stevens Point School Board. I'm running for the Stevens Point Public School Board. I want to put the public back into the school board. I want to see it open and transparent, and I want the public to be able to voice their concerns and be heard on the board level. I've served previously in the Student Achievement Committee and Legislative Committee, and I'm currently the county supervisor for District 17 and a trustee for the Village of Whiting.
Thank you. Next, Linda Lewis.
Thanks for having us here tonight. I am running for the school board because I believe in the success of our students, and that's what I really want to bring to the forefront of all our discussions. I have had six years of experience on the school board. I was not on the school board this past year. In the six years I have been on the school board, I was treasurer for three of those, which means I work with the business office and administration, and we run the business committee. I've also been on numerous other committees, other studies. The Human Resources Committee is one I was on, and also long-range planning. And anyway, my whole goal is to really get back to the four of our decisions being related to our students.
Next is Jeff Presley.
Thanks for having us this evening. I appreciate everybody coming out. I'm passionate about education. I have four children. One of them just graduated from SPAS last year. I have two in the system, and then one, she's only 19 months, so she's got a few years. So I've got a wide experience range as far as children within the district, a pulse of what our district's doing now, what our district wants to do in the future. That's my concern in being on the school board, is making sure that we're preparing not only my student, my children, but the students in this district for today and tomorrow. It takes somebody with strong will to be on the school board. Everybody says it's a thankless job. I'm up for it. I want to make sure that we have a great district for our children and the children to come. And the only way to do that? Get out and vote, April 2. Vote for me.
Terry Rothman.
Again, thanks to the League of Women Voters and to all of you for being here tonight. Educating kids is the most important thing we do in this community, and school board elections matter. School boards set policy and vision for the district. They hire a superintendent who leads the district, and they allocate scarce and finite resources when it comes to the budgeting process. There are nine of us, or there are nine school board members who are elected at large. Decisions are made generally on a simple majority basis. Five votes can determine how decisions are made. It's critical that we have the right voices on that board. I would like to be one of those voices for your kids in your school district.
Kim Shirick.
As she said, I'm Kim Shirick. I have lived in the Stevens Point area my entire life. I and my children all attended all of the public schools, and now they are on their way into the college field. Also, I'm running for school board again because I'm still passionate about children and education, and I believe that the school board needs to be transparent to the public, to the community, and to their staff. And I still believe in that. Thank you.
Lisa Totten.
And I feel like a broken record. Everybody, thank you. Anyways, I'm running for the board again because I value education very strongly. I believe in community involvement, community input, full disclosure, transparency, and also fiscal responsibility.
For the first question, we will begin with Samuel Levine, and then continue down the table. Community members, businesses, parents, staff, and administration would all agree that the Stevens Point School District should strive for continuous improvement in the quality of education that is delivered to our students to strengthen our community. With that in mind, what would be your primary goal if elected to the school board?
Well, my primary goal, as everyone knows who's followed me, is public participation. I think we need to get a consensus of staff, administration, the superintendent, teachers, support staff, some students, and also the public to get together to give us the priorities that we need. Those of us that have been around education know the main priority right now is a global economy. We've got to teach to that. We have to have more technical writing classes. We have to have more speech classes. We have to have more computer classes. We need to find a way to get these computers down into the elementary schools, not just the junior high and high school level. And a good start to that would be allowing people to bring their own computers to school and utilize them, and utilize the ones that are freed up in some of those lower classes. So it's important we all work together to improve education.
Linda Lewis.
Thank you. My goal, if I become a school board member, is to continue some of the goals we started several years ago. We kind of split them up into three areas. There was student achievement, finance, and human resources. To me, student achievement tops the list for me because our students are -- this is what we're here for. I like some of the stuff we're already doing with working with our teachers across the curriculum from K through 12. That really hasn't happened years ago. It's kind of nice to have them collaborate together and work so our children start in kindergarten, and it's a continuous flow all the way through kindergarten or through to graduation. I also want to work also then into our human resources, continuing some of those goals. We spent, the last year I was on the board, we spent a lot of time working on our handbook, which was very time-consuming, but I thought well worth it to have everybody at the table sitting down. I really want to continue more with working with our staff, finding different ways to build better relationships between our superintendent and our staff and school board and community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Presley.
If elected, the biggest thing is, and I think it's going to be probably a common theme up here tonight, is technology. When I sat on the board, my concern with the one-on-one initiative from Centri was it was concentrated to the upper levels. Case in point, my 19-month-old daughter bought her an iPad for Christmas. Wow, what a 19-month-old can do. Imagine what we could do at a lower levels within our school if we can integrate that into our curriculum. Obviously, the biggest thing is, though, with Act 10, we need to get our staff on board. We need to listen to our staff. Without good teachers teaching our children, it doesn't matter how much money we throw at them or the programs, we need our staff to be on the same page as us and to move us forward. So really, two big issues: technology and building relationships with our staff to make sure that this is not just a place to live, this is a great place to live and send our kids to school.
Terry Rothman.
As I indicated in my opening comments, educating our kids is the most important thing we do. We have a good school district, but we can be better. My vision is to have the community, our entire community, pulling together for the benefit of educating our kids. And that includes community members, grandparents like myself, parents, school board, superintendent, and our administrative staff, and our teachers, and the balance of our support staff, all pulling in the same direction for the benefit of educating our kids. They're our future leaders. They're going to be my caregivers and probably some of yours in time. We need to make sure that they have the education that they need to be happy, healthy, and productive, and we need to make sure that our teachers have the technology and the professional development they need to deliver that world-class education.
Kim Shirick.
Basically, my idea for the quality education improvement is basically all of us just working together, getting back on the same page, everybody, including community, all staff that we all work with, and all students, getting them involved in decision-making at the school board level, taking their input and taking it with pride and using it. Thank you.
Lisa Totten.
I've actually said this story to pretty much anybody who listens to me. There's a school district in the state of Wisconsin that took their issues to the community. They had one staff person on the committee, and their sole purpose was to provide information. It was not to make recommendations. It was not to lead that group in any way, shape, or form, so that the community itself could buy into what they were proposing. That, to me, is the key to everything. They did a multi-building referendum, passed for the time. Then, when they had finance issues, they did the exact same thing. I've been telling it to everybody, and I would love for that to become a reality more and more, public input.
Who next? Jeff Evil.
My goal as a board member would be business-focused. I'm involved with entrepreneurship in the community, and I understand that if we expect to have a strong local economy with vibrant businesses, we have to have a well-educated community. So it's important that the district cooperate more. I think I would like to see the business community more engaged with the educational community. Programs like just recently with Centri Insurance, where they provided a number of computers for our students. And we can focus our education to prepare our community for the jobs of the future so that we can maintain a strong economy, a strong local economy.
Question number two. Yes, and we will start with Linda Lewis. In light of Act 10, how best should the grievances and working conditions be resolved between administration and staff?
Act 10 came a whole new set of rules. I know one of the goals prior to Act 10 was to actually form some type of a committee, a group, to share ideas, to work with each other. Act 10 did change that a little bit. There's things that you can and can't discuss. I still would like to find a way, and to me, it doesn't have to be a perfect thing in the beginning, but I think we should find a way to do it informally or formally, that staff should be able to sit down with school board members, superintendents, administration. And I think it should be in a couple of different settings. I think we should have some informal settings. People get to know each other and learn to work with each other and develop the relationships. You don't have to agree on everything, but respecting each other and knowing where each other come from is a huge issue, is a big thing to me. You can always get through the issues if you have the respect and mutual trust with each other. So I think I would like to pursue a little formal and informal way where the superintendent sits down with each group.
Jeff Presley.
If it gets to the grievance process, it's already too late. You should address the problems before it gets to the grievance. The school board has already come up with the handbook to handle the grievance process, but in reality, the communication is broken right now. That's obvious. I've seen the school board meetings, talked to members within the community, staff, other individuals. We need to get that dialogue going back, just like Linda said, formally and informally. Obviously, with Act 10, it kind of changes how we're going to operate. We need to operate, obviously, within the law, but at the end of the day, we need to communicate as individuals, as members of the same community with respect and dignity. That's important. Dialogue, just like we're doing right now. We're expressing our views and talking with each other. That's how we need to do it. And that's how I would do it if I was sitting on the board.
Terry Rothman.
Thank you. Act 10 resulted in a significant cultural change in virtually every school district in the state of Wisconsin, and frankly, in a lot of municipalities. We're moving from a labor-relations environment to an employee-relations environment. They're two very different animals, and that process and that cultural change probably is going to take five to seven years to be effective. And the old collective bargaining agreements that were always kind of the safety net are now gone. And what has to happen between school boards, administration, teachers, and staff is we need to begin to have, as Linda and Jeff have said, formal and informal dialogues. We need to begin the process of building trust. But it's going to take time. It'll be rocky, but we need to begin to communicate together.
Kim Shirick.
I'm probably going to sound like a broken record again because, again, like Mr. Presley said, hopefully, we can address the problem before it gets to a grievance and deal with it, again, before it gets too big. And if we can work together, trust each other with a lot of transparency, the grievances shouldn't come around and get as big as they have been. So we just need to work all together and respect one another.
Lisa Totten.
Act 10 did make a lot of changes, and the unfortunate thing is what's happened in the state is the culture has changed, and we haven't had a replacement for the old system. So what's happened is we've thrown away the old system, and there's nothing going on right now. So people are in limbo, which is really unfortunate because when people are in limbo, then communication gets to be real touchy. People don't respect one another. They don't trust one another. So what I would like to see is for us to slow down a little bit if we don't have a good procedure in place to bring back whatever it is that's already in place and working.
Jeff Evil.
Changes in Madison have had a big impact on our area as well as other areas, but a lot of that we don't control. We do have to deal with it, though, and there are a lot of bad feelings in the community. And I've had the opportunity to talk with some of our employees at the school district, and there are some very legitimate concerns that they bring up. What I find that I would like to bring to the school board is more listening, because communication starts with listening. People have something to say. They're very passionate, and that's fine. But before we act, we should take the time and do the courtesy of listening.
Samuel Levine.
Act 10 doesn't say you can't talk to each other, but it seems like that's where it's been taken, and that's not right. The only way to find out what's going on in our schools for the board, the superintendent, the public, is for everybody to sit down and get together and talk. You've got to be proactive in this before it hits a level where you've got to go through the grievance procedure. You've got to sit down with each other. You've got to have conversations. You're not going to like each other sometimes. You're not going to like what the other person says, but it's got to be said and it's got to be listened to. And that's the only way for us to grow, is to talk to each other and find out exactly what's happening in our schools.
Linda Lewis. Did we start with you, Linda? All right, then, thank you. Thanks for helping me. So we'll be starting with Jeff Presley for this question. No, we are going to the audience questions. Should the district do more to take advantage of levy allowances to finance energy efficiency and renewable energy projects?
That's an easy answer. Yes. I know when I sat on the board, picked the low-hanging fruit. Case in point, we have the opportunity, we have two swimming pools within our school district. I don't know if you know that. They use a lot of terms. Solar heat pumps, relatively inexpensive, paybacks in five to seven years. We run those swimming pools 365 days a year. Take advantage of those kinds of projects and have that long-term goal. Fort Atkinson, look at what they did. They totally redid their district. They went to geothermal. They have this foresight of energy conservation. Think about it. If we can save that money on those kind of programs, guess where it gets to go? Back to our students. It's not hard economics here. The more money that we can free up to put back into our staff, back into our programs, the better our education will be for our children.
Terry Rothman.
It's going to be a lot of repetition, I think, for most of the folks up here for this question. A number of you may have seen in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel on Sunday about a month ago, there was an article about that levy-adjusting legislation. And obviously, it's the right thing for school districts to do. You can increase your levy. You can go out and make those energy-saving improvements, and those cost savings go back into educating kids. And I'll go back to my agenda, which I talked about in the opening statement and I rule in my closing. Educating kids is the most important thing we do. So putting those dollars back into educating kids and staff is the right thing to do.
Kim Shirick. I'd be surprised if anybody repeats my wording because I'm not an expertise in this. And so I'm not even going to pretend or come up with something, but I know any savings as raising three children, being a stay-home mom. If you can save in any place, you can put it back into your students, you can put it back in your district. That's the best thing we can do.
Lisa Totten.
Yeah, I agree. I can't imagine anybody saying no to this one, but yes, I mean, it'd be wonderful. You put the money back in for the kids, but the other thing you can do is teach the kids while they're doing it. They can be part of the project. So then, in the long run, they can take that home with them. They can share it with their parents. They can share it with their neighbors. So it's a total win-win, so.
Jeff Evil.
Yeah, what they said. No, again, as a former business owner, it's very important to maintain or to keep your expenses as low as possible, and this is a very, very effective way to do it, take advantage of every opportunity we have. I would like to see an energy efficiency as a major consideration for any future project, any building project, and renovation in the school district. Again, reducing our long-term costs.
And Samuel Levine.
Of course, we have to take advantage of this. We're very lucky that we have a major university in town, a green university, that can help partner with us and make some of these changes. I also recall several years ago, at a committee meeting at the school district, we got hundreds of thousands of dollars in rebates back from energy efficiency within the district. Think of how much that could add up over the years. We've got to partner with the university, and we have to work towards the most and best energy efficiency that we can.
Linda Lewis.
I think these are great discussions. I think, once again, this is a good out-of-the-box thinking to start looking at different ways to get money funneled into the schools and, you know, if we can pull things, you know, with the levy or even outside of our, when we do that wonderful worksheet with the state, if we can pull some of the little things, some of the maintenance, some whatever, so that money gets funneled back to kids and our students, we're coming out way ahead. So I'm, you know, kudos for people for looking at this. I mean, we've had teachers already at Ben Franklin doing e-cycling with the kids and working on solar panels there and also into the Boston School Forest. So I really, our teachers have really been ahead of this already and working with the e-rebates and that to get the money funnel back in. So yeah, absolutely, definitely a good idea.
Okay, the next question will begin with Terry Rothman. Here it is. Do school board members need to have rules regulating their own behavior?
Some of you at last week's meeting. You know, I'm a firm believer that we do. We are, there are nine school board members who are elected at large. Our only authority is when we meet and function as a board. We have no individual authority. And we get involved in a lot of things. And yes, I think the board should have a code of conduct, and it should have a code of ethics. And I also believe that the board should have sanctions in the event that we have board members who aren't following and playing by the rules.
Kim Shirick.
If I would have known this would have been on there, I would have gave my speech that I did last night at the board meeting. You know, like I said last night, there's nine different people on the board, nine different ways of life, nine different beliefs. What's right for me might not be right for Terry, right and wrong. So to have a code of conduct, I might think someone's doing something wrong, and they may not. So who would be the judge of it? Again, I think the community is the judge of it, getting them back on the school board or not. That would be the decision. However, regulating, talking to the community as a person, I don't announce myself as I'm a board member. Am I supposed to? Am I supposed to wear a logo? I don't think so. I'm community first and then the board member. Thank you.
Lisa Totten.
I too agree that the elections should be the place where the public, who put us into office, decide whether or not our behavior is acceptable or not. To add additional rules and regulations to a governing body that is elected by the citizens doesn't really make sense to me. If, like I said, if you don't like the way we're behaving, then at election time, that's when you speak. That's the way this government of the United States has been established. That's the way things run. I really don't understand why we would think at this level we would need it when I don't see it anywhere else.
I have a book called Everything You Need to Know You Learned in Kindergarten. I think that applies. I think that applies here. I mean, the things that we're talking about here are just common decency, respect for each other, treat others as you want to be treated, the real basic things, and I think it's sad to think that we would have to consider rules to have people treat each other with
Samuel Levin, sorry.
Every board has general rules and policies regarding boardmanship and ethics. To think that we have to take time to sit there and worry about who's going to say what, when they're going to say it, and if so-and-so doesn't like it, is ridiculous. If you've got to enact specific clauses and ordinances for a school board, you've got the wrong nine people on that board, and it's got to be changed.
Lynda Lewis.
I, I found over just the last couple of years, one being off the board and my last year on the board, and five years prior to that, it just seems like we've kind of gotten to a place that we shouldn't even be at. Nine members on the board. I agree with Jeff. You know, there's just, and it's just, it's the nine members, it's the people in the audience, the people that come to the podium. We've got to get back to this, we're here to do the job of the school district, we're here to educate our children. Working, there are, there are policies and set forth that, you know, to be courteous to each other, to, you know, work well with others, to be respectful, you know, those things are given to me, and I always chuckled at that policy, but I'm glad it's there. Do we really have to go down the path of really regulating people and whatnot? I just think it's even kind of a shame we're to this point talking about it, because I think it should be common sense and we shouldn't be at this point.
Jeff Presley.
It's embarrassing that we even have to talk about the subject. Go out and watch the previous school board meetings, they're online, you can stream them live, you can see who's doing it and who's not. I'm not here to educate you, you educate yourselves on which individuals you want to vote for. At the end of the day, my responsibility is to treat every one of my fellow school board members with dignity and respect, period. We can agree to disagree on topics, on hot topics, and when we walk out, we walk out as colleagues on whatever decision those nine individuals made, because for the simple fact, it's a rule, majority rules. If it's a five-four vote, if I'm in the minority, guess what? At the end of the meeting, I'm with those individuals that made that decision. That's my responsibility as a good board member. We need to take a step back and look at our composition right now. Do we have good board members? I don't know. Like they said, it's you who will decide.
We are now going to begin the final portion of this, this panel, and that is to hear the closing statements from each person, and we will start with Kim Shirick. I'm going to make this short and sweet so we can all go home and watch our little TV and crawl into bed. I'm a very passionate person, as I speak and I get involved, I'm very passionate, sometimes not always a good way, but I am there for you as the community, and I will voice, I will be the voice for you. And I also want to thank you for coming, and please go out and vote. Thank you. Lisa Totten.
As a board member, I feel responsible to represent you. When you call me and you discuss issues, I take those issues upon myself, they become my issues, so I do become very passionate about them. So all I say is, you know, make sure you come out and vote, and thank you again for
Jeff Evil.
Again, thank you all for coming. People tell me you either shut up or step up, and I've seen some challenges that we have in our community regarding education. I could complain about it, I can, everyone is always capable of doing a much better job, but it takes someone else to step up, it takes something extra. First of all, everybody says it's a thankless job, and I want to change that right now because I want to thank all the people that have ever served on the school board for their thankless job. I appreciate your vote.
Samuel Levin.
It would be my honor and my privilege to represent you on the school, on the Stevens Point Public School Board. And not only would I like to do that, I would like to see you take a step further, not only vote for who you think is going to represent you and who's going to listen so you can be heard, but also look to the future, to elect representatives down in Madison that are going to help out with school funding. We got a little bit of a raise this year, not what was taken away from us the year before, a little bit of a raise. But I bet a lot of you didn't see in USA Today last week, there's going to be a governor's conference here in the summer, and our governor wants to take all these governors that are coming in from the other states on a Harley ride to show them what Wisconsin's like. And by God, he's willing to say that Wisconsin's going to pay for these governors to learn how to ride a Harley so they could come here. Mr. Governor, remember us, put the money back in education where it belongs.
Lynda Lewis.
Once again, my, I guess I got to share a little story, and Sam was the one who kind of started this whole thing. Years ago, Sam was always a big advocate for having term limits for school board members, and I used to laugh, you know, I'm like, oh, okay, whatever, but you know what? I spent six years on the board, and I did have one year off, and you know what? It did make a difference. It was a good time to, those last couple of years were very, very trying, you know, with Act 10 being enacted, trying to work through the handbook, trying to do, trying to change stuff and trying to work with people that, you know, this is their livelihood. It was tough, there were some really tough decisions being made. Couple of years before that, we were cutting just $7 million out of our school budget, it was insane. So anyway, just kind of stepping back, I just spent this year thinking about things that meant a lot, and, I'm sorry. Running for school board is a big journey because I believe in our students and our staff and our community, and I think we can do some really good things if we all just work together.
Jeff Presley.
It was a privilege to serve on the school district for three years, I want another three years on the school board. I think there's a lot of opportunities right now on how we're doing business, but I think there's a lot of opportunities in the future. You know, as the signs say, live, work, and play. You know what? Not just that, I want my kids to come back here and live, work, and play. The only way that we're going to do that is to make a vibrant community with a strong educational system. That is the foundation that grows a community. You have a great burden on you this election, you've got to do your research, you've got to look at every candidate. Well, you know what, I would appreciate your vote, if you don't vote for me, make sure that you're voting for the right person that represents the future of what you want our community to look like. It's your responsibility. I thank the League of Women Voters, they do a great job in educating the public and getting those facts out, but that only goes so far. Number one, do your homework. Number two, get out and vote. It's easy to sit on the couch and complain about things, get off the couch and get out and vote, and I would appreciate your vote, because I would like that privilege again.
Terry Rothman.
Thanks again to the League for hosting tonight's forum, and thanks to all of you for being here. You know, as I said earlier, educating kids is the most important thing we do as a community, and whether it's community members, the board, the superintendent, parents, teachers, staff, we're all on the same team, and we're all, we should be pulling in the same direction. And that's keeping the focus on educating kids and making sure our teachers have the tools they need. We are nine voices that make the decisions in the school district, and because we do things with a simple majority, five decide how things get done. So your vote and your thoughtfulness as you go into the voting booth is important. I want to be part of the team that helps pull the district forward. Thank you.
I want to thank all of the school board candidates for your time and energy and participation this evening. Please feel free to meet with these candidates and any others who are still present after the final statements for this meeting. Be aware that the library closes at eight. The League would like to thank the Community Television for their videotaping and the Stevens Point Journal for videotaping this event as well. You can view the forum on the Stevens Point Journal's website, and also the times of replaying this on Community Television will also be on the website, and it will also be put on the League's website, so you can look at the Stevens Point area website as well to see when it should be retaped if you have friends or family would like to see it. We also want to thank the papers, Stevens Point Journal, the Portage County Gazette, and the Stevens Point City Times for publishing the candidates' responses to the League-sponsored questions. These responses will be published prior to the election and the timing, or at the timing decided by the editors. Responses will also be available on the League's website. Special thanks to League members who put this together for organizing and hosting the forum. And we also want to be reminded we're in the Stevens Point Public Library. Thank you to the staff at the library for their assistance in allowing the use of this facility, our facility. Thank you to all of you for your attendance and attention. Remember, the election, it's April 2nd. Thank you.